There's still lighting plan, there's still checking on the culvert, still talking to DOT. You still have your DEP permit that you're waiting for and your DOT permit too, correct?
Yeah.
Now, the DOT is, right, I'm sorry, the traffic, the DOT is all set.
Yep.
So those few things, obviously, the preliminary is not final, so there's the other stuff. But you're aware of all those different things. Was there anything else that was outstanding?
I don't, I don't hear your motion, so...
Was there anything that was outstanding that you can think of?
No.
No? And then hopefully we can have Mr. Poccat back in town and come and discuss with us. Okay, that's the motion. Your choice is to second it or let it die. If you second it, then we can have more discussion and vote. If you don't second it, then someone has to make a different motion.
I will second.
All right, further discussion. Anyone in the audience? All right, we will take a vote.
I have a little discussion.
Sure.
I can't support this because I feel that what we'd be doing is exacerbating an existing situation. A bad situation with that water on the other side of the road. Also, I don't feel that, I've read through the traffic plan on the book, you know, in your book, and it's very well done. But I don't feel that they've addressed the traffic issues well enough. I've observed a lot of problems on these other lots that are around, and they're nowhere near as big as this lot, my lot is. I understand how there will be a turnover with the various shifts and so forth, and that buses will be arriving and leaving and, you know. But I, I, I just have seen this problem of actually these lots, and I don't feel that that's been addressed well enough. So for that reason, I can't support this, this motion. So, that's my discussion, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right, let's go to a vote to give preliminary approval, which is not final approval, for the application as presented. Two to three. So that's a, a no. Which doesn't usually happen, so what we do, okay, so the application...
I have a couple for you. This is approval denial for, so this is the amended form because you didn't put up a table for them last year, last meeting. So we still have the table for them.
Oh, I see, put the information on it.
And I could tell this one.
Oh, great, perfect, thank you. All right, so she's pretty good, so.
Could I ask her question?
Sure.
Knowing that we have more info than you all are looking for, is it an opportunity to come back for preliminary approval again? And see if you can provide some input from DOT and some more detailed traffic analysis?
Yes, you can do preliminaries many times if you want.
Any sort of denial, we table to the next meeting and provide that information if we're able to dig it up, I know?
Right, so with the den, well, with the denial, you have options. You can go to the appeals board and appeal to denial. You can find out what you need to do to get an approval the next time. And, or you could just decide not to go forward.
So appeals board, if you want to appeal, or come back to you all with more info?
Yep.
Okay, so we do have, still have that option to follow up with DOT and hopefully answer some of these concerns.
Yes, yep. Yes, you do. All right.
John, can I just reiterate? So they don't have to start again with the pre-application workshop, they can start at state development preliminary report?
Correct, yeah. So the pre-op is just like an informational meeting?
Okay.
Like what the tower did tonight. They had so much information for a pre-application meeting, but that was fine. And then you can do preliminary 20 times if you want. It's the final that's once and done and whatever. Okay, approved, denied. Reason for denial, I'm just gonna put on here a three to two, a two to three vote. Vote two. In favor. Three. Opposed. Or I guess I should have asked, were any of the three of you abstaining? Because that's a different thing. So there's an approval, there's, there's a yes, there's a no, and there's an abstain.
All in favor opposed to the motion?
All in favor opposed to the motion. There's one.
Well, we had three, four.
No, we had two.
A two, four.
Two that were four, the last three of you.
You can confirm who's opposed.
You can either oppose or abstain, so all those opposed. So we have two opposed.
I just want, I'd like you to say, I just want more information on what's being opposed. I'm not saying I'm against it.
Two in favor, two opposed, and one abstain. That's still an L though.
Type it, it doesn't go to the voter in that case? Baseball, my fault.
Oh, runners, I was just saying. Oh, man, okay. So, reason for denial. Need more info. And opposed. Until solution for roads, is that fair? Or the board ran it, should, fair?
One of them, who's gonna reach out to the DOT, you are.
So, I'm actually, we're gonna have a discussion at the select board meeting on the 18th. I invited the applicants to come, and John to come, so that we can write the letter. So that, because the select board is not the most fluent in this.
Can you, can you ask DOT on the crash number from the floods also? How many accidents have been recorded due to the flooding?
At that location?
Yeah, if they have any records of that.
Well, so, yes, I can put that in the letter, but what we're doing is generating the letter to the DOT. And just having a discussion at the select board, so that we can generate it from the elected town officials.
John, do you remember the accidents from the flood?
Yeah, I can't, I can't remember any area that were caused by it.
Is it supposed to 2016? Flood, does it says their colors and stuff?
I can't, I don't remember.
I mean, with that water over the road and vehicles, you know, going slow and navigating through it, but I have not responded to any accidents there that I can, that I can recall.
I mean, part of the problem is we solved with that color. We think.
All right.
At least, but the water's mother of the net. Mash, nah, it's a mash. It's, isn't it?
I'm gonna get you a copy of this.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Then, who wants to?
Uh, do you mind making a comment, please?
Yes.
I'm too busy.
I'll try and make sure that you provide anything that you think would help us in writing.
Yes.
All right.
So who one of them don't win?
I'm not sure.
1936?
No, 78.
No, I'm, I'm sorry. Old Route 1.
The highway?
Nah.
Old Route 1. Much longer before that.
1936, 1934, and then. So how many years did we go until there was a flooding issue across over Louisiana? At least probably 30 years after the U-21, I guess.
We're gonna move on with the other stuff. Thanks. Would that be good?
Yeah.
All right. This goes with that.
Thank you for the two yes.
Good, see ya. This goes with that. I think these are all for the record. Okay. So, where are we at? Any public information or comment? Public is gone. Other business. Carly was nice enough to finish this application approval denial form. Adding the table on there, remember we had one that we tabled, so we needed to add it to the form, it wasn't anything, thank Carly. I don't know, you guys wanna take a look at it? See if you see anything that should change, I mean, I use it tonight, it doesn't matter, we can prove our own forms, we can use our own forms, we don't need selectmen to do that for us, just nice. Less time involved. I think it looks good.
I can't even remember what the old one was like, this looks fine, great.
It was, it was missing when an application is tabled. That's what wasn't on it.
Okay.
And then, so she added when it's tabled and the reason, and then added a reason for denial after the application is denied. Because it just said deny, I think, before.
And you used this tonight, right?
Yeah.
Great.
And probably technically we should have voted to enact it before I did that, but it's not a big change.
It would change the outcome.
It's nothing significant that would have mattered, I don't think, in this case, so. Is everyone fine with the form, we can vote to have that enacted?
I certainly.
Second?
All in favor.
Okay.
It's a five, unanimous.
I have a couple tiny items. I have a couple tiny other items.
Okay, I got a couple too first, I thought you had some other stuff. So, we met, some of us the other day and went over the comp plan, the first seven chapters of it. Got through it, we ended up with one document with markups on it, which I'm gonna share with the comp plan committee. I forget when the next meeting is. Is it on the 22nd? So I'll share those with them, we don't, we won't have any more sections until after that meeting. And I think, we've gone through half of it, so I think we'll just need one more meeting to go through those and take care of it. We did a good job, we went through half of it.
We got to eight, or seven out of eight.
Yeah, we got seven out of, right, but there's 12 total.
More than half.
So we did, yeah, but the other ones are big. And the land use one is the very last one, so it's a little bit more substantial. The, let's see, well, let's see how this thing. I think that that was all that I had. The town meeting is next week, right, next Thursday?
Next Tuesday, six o'clock at the school.
Six o'clock at the school, so I will stand up and do the ordinances. They didn't go through exactly the way that we presented them. They were a little bit remastered, we did some last minute changes to them to make, make them a little bit different.
What time is the town meeting set?
Six o'clock.
Six.
You're gonna have it out of Winkin's side, right? It's on there right now.
On Tuesday, right? What day is that?
A week from today, May 16th, Winkin's Day.
Yep. And I have copies of the articles, the biggest thing that came through differently is the, the live entertainment one. What we.
Real quick, where is, where is the planning board meeting next week?
It's the school.
At the school?
Yep, the planning board meetings, the planning board meetings at the school in the auditorium. Or the gym, or whatever you wanna call it.
Is it gonna be a moderator?
Yes, Sheriff Joe Mary will be on it, moderating.
Who is it?
Sheriff.
The sheriff's mayor.
Sheriff.
Westside resident.
So, what happened with this is that the, the penalties were stripped out. And, some lineups have been added. But it's going through this way and we can adjust it later when we do a lot of work and stuff with the consultant.
What, what are you talking about, penalties were stripped out?
We had a penalty there if you had live entertainment after nine, you lose your permission to have live entertainment.
I thought there was a fee, was it?
And then there was another one for after, if you were having live entertainment without the permission to have live entertainment, there was a B. And so those, flip it to the back page. And so those were stripped out of there. So basically, there's, there's no penalty at this point for not following it.
So is it a drive on?
Well, but the sheriff can be brought in.
There's no penalty. So what we'll do is, we'll decide when we do our thing, it just came back from legal that way.
Well, they also lumped it in, that included the mobile home part as well, it had to be.
Right, what, what, what they did was, remember how we had it separate so that the urban development park can have live entertainment? And it, the time doesn't matter, we changed the time in the business and commercial. So we made it separate, the new business and commercial could have live entertainment, but only until nine o'clock. Well, the lawyers stripped that out and did it nine o'clock for everywhere. So, we changed it so that under hours, it's no live entertainment, it's permitted after 9:00 PM in the business and commercial and mobile home park zone, which it's not a zone, it's not a label, that's fine. So it had to be changed last minute after the lawyer got it.
Because back out.
I think it's fine, it, it, it has the intent of what we were trying to do. It has the intent of what the person who came in to ask for it wanted to do, it just has no penalty. So. So yeah, we got it. But I have copies here, maybe you'll also see it, but it's also gonna be at the meeting. So just wanna share that real quick. Other than that. Carly, looks like we have something here for W4ME, do we have to do that every year?
Yeah, I know, some of you just filled this out, but we are transitioning to a payroll company, so our treasurer is requesting that everyone fill out the forms once again.
Okay. Is there a deadline for this?
Do you hear licenses and stuff, do you?
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't get a deadline, but.
It doesn't affect the Y1.
Right, sooner rather than later would be preferred.
The labor payroll company happens.
And then she, then Kelly won't have to keep chasing us for it, so. Soon as it's out, I know.
We just won't pay you until we receive it.
So we're gonna have an I9 too, huh?
It's an I9.
Citizenship and homeland security and all that crap.
Oh, lovely.
The W4, W4B.
Wow, so that's proper D1, I just can't, okay.
And a direct deposit.
Yeah, so now you can get your stipends right at your bank account.
Is that, is that an exclamation?
No, that's optional.
Okay. All right. You said you had a couple of things.
Yeah, the other thing, I just wanted to catch everyone up on LD 2003, as I'm sure you're all at the edge of your seat. I reached out to Max, the legislature's been holding a public hearing every Tuesday and continuing through June. Max said that there is some support for extending, especially for smaller towns, giving them another year. But there is a majority of legislature that's really pushing to enact it, so he's saying, and I mean, obviously, we're still in a holding pattern, but he's saying, expect. It's looking more likely that it will go through.
This is Max saying?
Max Jamstone, yeah, from, from Y1.
Yeah, from McPost.
Right, so. No action to be taken, but just, just a little temperature.
They had a workshop a week ago today. And supposedly, out of the workshop is supposed to come some compromise and some action, but I haven't heard anything. Just that there did seem to be a lot of sympathy for enacting the one-year extension. They actually proposed lots for two years, but they backed it. It seemed to be a lot of support to change that to just one year. And I haven't heard the, you know, they haven't only applied to the smaller towns, that would make sense. So maybe that's, that'll be a compromise, but I, I, since last Tuesday, I haven't heard anything. I represented this in Washington, you know, Atlantic States Judiciary Meeting, she was, so. But I'm hoping I'll be at two. Something about it in the next, hopefully through two days.
That's all I have.
All right, anybody have anything else until we move on to minutes?
Suzanne, you talked about other town meetings that would probably need, other town meetings that will need, you know, special town meetings. And it would be far, essentially, audience changes, or what would they do?
So, I mean, we're fortunate that we've, we've written the language, we just need to send it to the attorney, she would need to flip the switch at some time for the LD 2003 that you guys wrote a month ago. But there's, it's, I mean, there's towns that just, there's some towns that meetings in October, some towns that meetings in May, like we are. So it's gonna require secondary meetings to put these through.
So if we have to enact, if we have to change our ordinance prior to July 1, we'll have to have a special town meeting before July 1, is what you're saying? I mean, this, the holiday doesn't pass.
Yeah, yeah, in, in theory, that is accurate, but you'd have to have someone also on the agenda for the planning board to have to put an application in for LD 2003, so if we. And, and I don't know, does anyone line up anything off, does anyone come say it and do it?
I, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just wondering, when there gonna be another town meeting?
So we have our comp plan is almost done, which is gonna require a town meeting.
Would that possibly be July?
May, August, at the earliest.
Okay.
So, but, but, and so in theory, or, and we can have it anytime, there's no set schedule for it, we could throw in the LD 2003, the amended live entertainment, whatever we have at that time that are valid.
Well, that's what I was kinda wondering, what that timing is.
We don't, we don't have one, I mean, we're close, we're very close with the comp plan.
Okay.
And I could say, you know, fall, late summer to fall, but it's, we're all next.
It could be that it's delayed until the fall town meeting anyway, but for the comp plan, okay. Okay, thank you, that's all.
Yeah, and I think even if it isn't physically in our ordinance, we have to follow it.
You have to follow as it's presented, but they also have to be on, they have to go through the process.
Right.
So if they're not on an agenda and they have to, and they don't follow our process to get on the agenda, it kind of buys us 30 days beyond that.
What's our process to be on the agenda?
Well, yeah, if they, if they don't get it into 14 days, it'll be 22 days now.
Right, but I'm, I'm saying we don't, since it's not, we didn't write down a process for them to come through, there is no application for any of those different things, the multi.
But they have to be on the agenda to have.
Correct, but they'll be using the generic application and, because there isn't one for that, because we didn't do that, because we were waiting, so. So in the past, John, you've said that there were people lined up to.
Oh, there's a lot of scuffle about the people talking about it.
Yeah, someone was just asking about it.
Someone in their yard, or like a 50-unit place?
No, just, you know, just having the ability to have and, you know, have the accessory use.
Right, so an extra building in the yard, not, not necessarily putting up another, or anything for something else, is what I'm asking. So not a big developer like what was over on.
No, I haven't heard anything from them.
And it doesn't apply to shoreline zone anyways, right?
It does, actually.
No, for sure, we can't, we.
It does, but the setbacks still apply. It does, the shoreline can have its own masterful setbacks.
Yeah. Which is always difficult, you know, like these small lots and.
Right, it can be within the 250 feet, but it cannot be in the 75 feet, correct.
Right, are you guys sure of that?
Yeah, we asked, we asked Max, yeah. He said it's the same as the zone now as far as the DEP setbacks.
I thought it didn't apply in the shoreline zone.
When he was, and we had him clarify, we had him clarify, when he's saying shoreline zone, he meant the 75 feet. So you can't put anything in the 75 feet, just like any other house, no matter what, but you can do it in the 250, or, or the.
75.
The 175, that's before the 75.
Well, these are, these are some of the questions that the, the state is struggling with, on their recommendations and so forth, so. Hopefully, we'll have a reprieve, we'll have to just wait and see.
But fortunately, you, you, it could flip the switch fairly quickly. You've done the work behind the scene to get it done.
Yep.
Right, so we do have that.
So you're, I mean, your hurdle for you is.
We're sort of set up to do it.
Right, should be needed, you can enact it. We should probably then send it off to Sally and have her approve it, so we can just, because it hasn't been sent to Sally yet.
Well, I wasn't here when you guys did that, so decisions were made and.
But we have, we chose not to send it to the attorneys, but we knew we needed it.
Why do we need to send it to the attorney if it's state language that they're proposing?
No, it are.
We can put in other pieces to it, but.
Are we going to, for July 1st, put other pieces into it?
I think we did.
We did, it hasn't been, it hasn't, we wrote it into the language.
We wrote it into.
State language hasn't been finalized yet, though, so I wouldn't.
Right, I mean, personally, that was the reason why it didn't go to the lawyer in the first place, is the state wasn't, it was all in flux, the state language wasn't finalized.
So perhaps you should wait and have another review.
Well, I think we did, though, didn't we write, we, we.
I didn't think we were completely done with it, I thought we had another workshop.
I don't know, wasn't here.
And then Max sent it out for us all, so it's an email from Max.
And he had a lot of questions for the state planning office, or whatever the, the.
So what was that? Right, so it's not finalized.
Correct, it's not.
And it's not finalized for lots of reasons, one, the state isn't done, two, we don't know what they're gonna do.
Have we received the feedback from Max?
Yes.
So maybe we should put that on the agenda then, for the next plan, we're needing to review what he gave us back? And then come to what you believe your final position is.
I thought you guys did that, though.
We did.
So you did review what he said.
I don't think we sat that.
I didn't think we had done a final review.
I don't think we, once you're his final notes.
Right.
So we could, should put it on the next agenda.
Or at least have a workshop, perhaps.
In what form with a final note, because all I have is a document, I don't have any notes about it.
Well, he, he, there's things he put in, he put language in there based upon what we requested.
Okay, so that's what's in that document?
Right, so in theory, it's not, it, it, but I don't think it's been then discussed as a group after that.
Right.
Okay, all right, see, I thought you were not done.
So I think, I think maybe it would, because we're getting closer.
We're not done.
We're getting closer, maybe you put on with the June agenda, and then after that, send it to Sally.
Because this is May, June.
So that it could, you're really close to the July 1 deadline, shouldn't you have to?
All right.
Have Mary.
Carly, just so that we all have the latest, do you mind emailing that back out to everybody?
Yeah.
Max's final, whatever that we need to review.
Oh, that'd be good, thank you.
We can do it at the next meeting, I just wanna make sure I have the most recent, because I'm not sure at this point, because I thought it was finished. And then we can put that under other business for next month.
And I just encourage send that to Sally, when you guys come to your final, send that off to Sally.
I think we're gonna wait to send it off to Sally until we do LD 20.
But if it sounded we're that close.
Yes, yeah.
Well, and, and if 98% of it is the state language.
Right.
Yes, it should go to Sally, but it's not that, it's, it's not that important, because it's the state legal language. It's not like we wrote the whole thing ourselves and it needs to be vetted by a lawyer before it goes out there.
We put boundaries on it that weren't in the state language, like the size of the unit. That wasn't in the state language, so we made it, so those are things that we need to make sure that we can do. And, and, and in a real estate course, I was, they said that the accessory value should not see the size of permanent dwelling, which I was like, oh, that's interesting, I'm playing it. So you don't have a small house to a big house.
Right.
And that, we, we talked about it, but we didn't, that wasn't aligned or that we had to put pen to paper on.
We did, though, we said maximum size.
But it didn't say that, that it, that it could be larger than your initial unit, the accessory value should not be larger than the higher.
Probably did, but I didn't see that.
We did.
Well, I think what we need to do is.
We need to look at it again, so.
We need to look at it again.
Carly, if, if we will send it out to us, thank you, so we will look at it again.
Do we wanna set our date for the workshop? I know, I know.
Do you know how many?
I know you've been trying to avoid.
I'm not trying to avoid, I'm just.
Haven't you do it right before the, the planning board meeting, next meeting, that's, that's on one day.
So we'd have a meeting during 30?
How about we do it at the end of the June meeting?
Would that, in town, we have to have a special town meeting and get it on the books?
It doesn't have to get on the books.
It, well, it has to get voted on, it's an ordinance, but.
Okay, hold on, I thought we just said it's a state rule, so it doesn't have to be voted on for us to. Okay, hold on, I thought we just said it's a state rule, so it doesn't have to be voted on for us to use it.
It does have to be voted on. If we're changing our ordinance language, it has to be voted on at the town meeting.
Okay, so let me, let me make sure we're clear with this. If the state enacts it, in the July meeting, we have to follow it regardless of whether it's physically in our ordinance.
Correct.
So you can wait until November to have your meeting to move it into the ordinance. Jumping through hoops to get stuff on the ordinance. Stuff in the ordinance is into a town meeting or to the lawyer on a two-day notice is not appropriate.
Understood, we're talking about getting it whenever we have the comp plan, to have that added to it, which is, you know, August, maybe, September. But we don't know what Sally's, so if we get it in June to her, she gets it back to us, then it's.
So we don't have to have a special meeting of us to hurry up and get it ready to go into a meeting to be thrown into the ordinances? That's what I'm saying.
Correct.
Okay.
But you could, I mean, you're gonna do a workshop to finalize it, even last time. And I think a little quickly, because you guys, it's nearly done.
There were a couple of things, though, that we had, that were optional. One was the maximum size of the.
Right, and we decided. We decided.
We did a minimum size, I think they did a minimum size.
So wouldn't that have to be voted on at this town meeting?
All really good questions. I think if we're forced, we have to use it, and it's state and they're mandating it.
Right, but Max, Max gave us a bunch of, let's just review that, let's find, find time to review what Max came up with from our input, right?
Do you guys wanna pick a night? To meet, or do we wanna do it at our June meeting?
I say we do it at the June meeting, just do it after the applica, like, and I think to put it, do it first, because I'm afraid, you know, then the public just sits here and waits for us to go through that.
Yeah, we should do it first.
Like, we could do it right after, maybe, as long as we don't, do, do we have.
Suzanne was proposing that we come in here at five o'clock and do it, is what she was saying. You said before the meeting.
Yeah, it's, it's, you guys are nearly done, I don't think it's gonna take much discussion.
Whenever, whenever it's best for everybody, so it's June sixth?
No, thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
Right?
June thirteenth is the meeting.
Right, yeah.
So you wanna do it after, or you wanna do it first? Miss Shannon?
I'd like to do it after, seeing how, I know a lot of us are working right after the border six, and I come over here. Right?
That's right.
Yeah. So we can either do it June thirteenth, or we can pick a different night and have a special thing for it. It's up to you.
I probably.
It may end up that we have to have a special night anyway, if they give the comp plan on the twenty-second, and then we can do both of them in one night.
Okay. On the twenty-second of June, or?
The comp plan meeting is the twenty-second of May. So after that, should probably have the rest of the sections, I'm guessing. So, but it's up to you guys, we can wait until the June meeting, or we can, if we had a separate meeting, we could do the comp plan and the LD two thousand three all at once.
I don't know if they haven't finished the land use of the comp plan, have they?
We reviewed it the last time and.
But that last meeting got canceled because of COVID, so whatever, you were, you were a meeting behind.
We discussed it at the last meeting that we went to, and then he said that he'd have it ready for the next meeting. And yeah, it got canceled, but it should be there on the twenty-second. If not, we can just adjust.
Um, I can do either, so I'll make either work.
I like the meeting.
Whatever these guys.
The regular meeting, or a special meeting?
The regular meeting.
The regular meeting, okay.
Afterwards. I can do you better, I know.
I don't know, you're allowed.
Do we never be able to?
In general?
Do it.
Well. So you wanna have the comp plan.
Going to the workshop. We're on the eight thirty-five, so are we gonna, do we really gonna be able to do it after a meeting?
Alright, so.
Without going to the. Maybe going on the application.
So we'll do whatever we can after a regular meeting, on the thirteenth, except then.
Say one.
Guys, guys, guys. Settle down. I think we need a special meeting, we can do both of them. If the comp plan is not ready for us to look at, we'll blow off the special meeting and we'll do the LD two thousand three at the end of our regular meeting.
Okay. I'm good with that.
And you're right. You're not wrong, you're not wrong.
I'm just saying, we, we.
I know. It's eight thirty, I know. Eight thirty's ago, we're gonna get out of here in three minutes.
Okay.
So can we set a day for a special one that we may cancel? After the twenty, anytime after the twenty-second.
The thirtieth?
Suzanne? Grownups are talking. Really?
I didn't hear, what's wrong?
Carly says the grownups are talking.
Today, so I'm not a kid.
Yeah, not to you guys, this one. Those of you, we have video and audio, I don't know, I'm gonna hear that.
Okay, so possible workshop on the thirtieth at six?
Thirtieth, it's a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
I didn't, I didn't pick a day, is the thirtieth available, Carly?
It is.
The thirtieth is available.
That is the day after Memorial Day, just for anyone that's traveling.
Yeah, it's a Tuesday after Memorial Day, does that work? For anyone?
What time, what time, what time?
We'll do six o'clock, we always do.
That's fine.
So late enough.
Aye.
You?
I should do it.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, so may. Thirty, and Carly is gonna get us an email for the LD two thousand three, and I will get us the comp plan stuff. Alright. Anyone have anything else? Suzanne? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll just.
You don't care about minutes?
Oh, oh.
You already voted, time to go.
I was trying to say that.
Further discussion, we've got the minutes, we have some minutes.
I'm gonna be the second to print it. You have a second.
All right.
All the paper.
Wait a minute, further discussion, I had something in here that was really not right, that I wanted to make sure it was changed, because I didn't have it until tonight. Carly, did you not send the minutes, these out to anybody before tonight?
I did not, no.
Okay. So.
I've been directed to make changes and then not re-send them out, so that's what I'm.
Really?
Doing. You had, you made the motion, you wanted me to correct on main gravel.
Yes.
But you were the one, I went back and listened to it to confirm, you were the one that made the motion to continue.
To continue?
Motion to conditionally approve.
I said I'm not making a motion.
I can send you the tape.
And then Jamie did it, didn't you?
No.
For main gravel?
Yeah.
I was with Jerry.
You said, these are our options, and I need someone to make a motion, and then there was a pause, and you said, okay, I'll let you off the hook, and you made the motion.
Alright, okay, it's fine, let them know.
So there's a motion and a second to approve the minutes?
Yes, there is. All of us in favor of the minutes? Motion to adjourn is on the table still, now, second. All of us in favor?
Aye.
unanimous.